We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll move to public comment. Is there anyone that'd like to make a comment on an item that is not already on the agenda? And we ask that you limit it to a certain amount of time, but come up and state your name and what your comments might be.
Good evening. Apologies for speaking fast. I have a lot to say and only too much to say it. My name is Ryan Westfall. I'm a longtime homeowner, first time speaker before the council. I'm here tonight to oppose the rooster ban. I have two children aged four and six. They personally fed, watered, and raised six cute baby chicks. We ordered six females. One of them turned out to be male. This rooster ban will take a loved family pet from my children. That's my children's argument from a motion. My wife, Jessie W., started a petition online that has 160 signatures. Many of those who have signed that petition have comments mentioning that St. Albans has a very high per capita crime rate, drug issues, homelessness, porch pirates, people stealing packages, car break-ins. There are much more important things that the city council should be focusing on, but I wish to challenge this on a more fundamental level. Just moments ago, you all spoke the Pledge of Allegiance. You pledged an oath to the Republic. A republic protects the life, liberty, and property of the citizens. You pledged an oath to liberty and justice for all. For all includes the minority of citizens in St. Albans who have backyard chickens and roosters. This ban, based on a simple complaint, is a direct violation of that oath and that pledge. Frankly, this is childish. I tell my two boys the same thing. Just because your feelings are hurt does not mean you can hit or steal. You do not magically get the right to violate someone else's property simply because your feelings were hurt. The morality of it does not change even if that person asks government to do it on their behalf. You cannot morally violate the property rights of citizens simply because someone complained. That neighbor is free to do whatever they want on their property, and I'm free to do whatever I want on mine. If that neighbor doesn't like what they see or hear, they need to move to a homeowners association or purchase a piece of property large enough to achieve that privacy. If they don't, that failure is on them and them alone. You have a duty to protect and defend the rights of the citizens, including from the arbitrary whims of other citizens. I urge you to look beyond the immediate noise complaint, and I demand that the St. Albans City Council immediately rescind the ban on roosters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir. Ryan Westfall.
Ryan, so Ryan, if there was a dog next door to you
Yeah.
and the dog continuously was barking and barking and barking, now we have we have an ordinance for that. Do you think we should abolish that ordinance as well?
I would agree that you should.
Okay, so in your opinion, if a dog continuously barked next door, that's fine as long as?
If I don't like it, I should have bought a piece of property that's larger and I can't see or hear my neighbors. I've lived in rental units with attached walls. I didn't like it. I was willing to pay extra or move to a different city to have no attached walls. We bought it, sold our house in St. Albans and bought a duplex in Ward Five. And in order to get that extra rental income, I am willing to listen to other people.
Okay, so the needs of the one are more of a priority than the needs of the many?
It's not about that. It's about property rights. If somebody owns a piece of property, it's their property.
But my question is, so the needs of the one are more important than the needs of the many?
If it's their property, yes.
So if you, you have kids, I have kids. If your neighbor, you touch lawns, your neighbor's walking around nude in front of your children. That's cool.
If I don't like it, then I can put up a fence. You know what I mean?
Then what do you?
I understand that culturally, that's not acceptable in America. But it kind of, it is what it is. If you don't want to see your neighbors, you don't have to look.
I guess you're saying culturally, roosters aren't acceptable in the city.
Many would argue that Vermont has a rural culture and history of chickens, of farming, et cetera.
I think that, yeah, I'm sorry, Chad.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think that I grew up in the country. I grew up in Fairfield. Fairfield is rural, and I moved to the city. St. Albans City is very dense. Like, it's definitely not rural. It's rural maybe compared to New York City, but it's, as far as Vermont goes, I would say that we, it's definitely a city. I think that there's a misconception out there that it's one person that complained that had us start talking about the ordinance. And I just want you to know that it's not one person. We've had multiple complaints from different areas of the city, and it's not one person. I just think it's really important for you folks to know that.
I understand, and that doesn't change my argument fundamentally.
Okay, but I just want, you mentioned one person, and I've seen that like out there on social media, that it's one person that moved from Burlington, and that is one of many that have complained.
Right. We have Tractor Supply. We have Guys Farm and Yard. During COVID, there was chicken coops flying off the shelves. I would, I would hazard a guess that there are more backyard rooster owners than there are people complaining in the city.
So to add to Trudy's point, yes, I'm sure there are more backyard rooster owners, but we haven't heard the complaints from them. And that's where this is kind of coming from. I also just want to add that, number one, this was brought to us. Like, there's this idea that we are going out and saying, roosters need to go, but this was something that was brought to us. And the idea that there were bigger fish to fry out there, it's also not legal to do drugs in the city. Like, we're not, we're not just prioritizing this rooster thing. It's one of many things that we're working on as a council.
Right.
So loud noises, loud dogs, it's all, it's all a bigger project. This is just one that was specifically brought to us.
But thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll see you next month.
Yeah, bye bye.
Okay, anyone else for public comments?
Let me see, I might have one. I'll bring it up because the person that wanted to talk about it wasn't able to make it. I had a person in my ward who called up and talked to me about not filing his homestead exemption on time. And if everyone, if people don't know what that is, it's Form HS 122 that you file with your Vermont tax return in order to keep your property tax at the homestead level. If you don't file the HS 122, then your property comes in at the higher rate. There's two rates in Vermont. The rate that you get if you live in your property, and that's a rate that if you don't use it as your primary residence. This person then figured out or found out through conversation that they had not filed their HS 122. So they went to, came down to the city to file an HS 122, and they were charged a penalty by the city, which was several hundreds of dollars. And had the person just left it the way it was and did not file an HS 122 and just waited until next year to file it, the difference would have been under a hundred dollars. So I don't know how that HS 122 penalty is established by the city, but I think this was a ridiculous enforcement of that fee on this person.
So the abatement? So we just did one on the abatement. And the deal is, is the information that we got?
The High Street?
It's the same guy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the abatement board cut, did cut his fee.
Okay.
So it went from 600 to 300.
Okay.
The problem was, and it probably would have gone lower, but the problem was that the cities, the question was asked of the city staff. Basically, what the city staffer was saying is that that money has to go to the state. And that should have been caught in Montpelier, but the way it is now, it gets caught by the town first. The town finds them and then it goes to the state. What we were asking the city, and I think probably should have been clearer, is, is this all going to the state? And their answer is, until you know the exact number of homestead exemptions, you don't know exactly what needs to go to the state. So they, so they kind of pick something, a number that, to make sure there is nothing that we don't get in the rears on it. I think, though, there's got to be a way to calculate that better.
I understand being late because of just not wanting to file it or just neglecting to file it, but to mistakenly not file it.
His was, his was even more, TurboTax used to have a very clear screen, and so obviously, we're talking about the same guy.
Yeah, yeah.
And now they don't.
And this year, they change TurboTax every year. And you only use it once a year. And so he missed, it was a clear case of, but the, the question that we had before us was, how much is going to the state? And we couldn't get a clear answer. So we ended up just cutting it in half for the guy.
Okay.
Because, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to forgive.
Yeah. He called me before I went to Florida. I knew you guys met, because I wanted to go to that meeting, but I was in Florida. And I came back and I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that this type of practice is happening. And if the city is going to try and take advantage of this type of situation, I'm not in favor of it.
So from my understanding, the state has to get their total number of money, no matter what? So if he wasn't going to pay it, because the state had already recorded it as late, if he wasn't going to pay that $600, it would come out of our city budget, which is why we cut it in half, so that it's basically like 50/50. We're cutting you a deal.
But we don't know if that breaks us even or doesn't, because we couldn't.
The penalty for filing was more than it was for him not filing. So, but okay, all right. I don't want to take the council up with something that's already in the statute.
600 is an excessive penalty, in my mind.
It's not our penalty, though.
Well, and that's, that was going to be my next question. Isn't the, I thought the HS form, I thought the HS form was to be filed with the state first and foremost. But the, but the state kicks it back to the, to the municipalities. So it's a problem. We brought it up with, we brought it up with Luna, that it should be, it should, the deal should be, the bill should come from the state, not the city. But that's not the way it works right now. But I also think that there's got to be some calculation better. Because when I asked the question, is all of this going to the state, the answer was, I don't know, because we don't know what that full number is yet.
So when you cut his bill, his penalty in half, did we eat the other $300 as a city?
Could be, or maybe not. There was no answer.
We'll find out.
Okay, because that's not great either.
We will, we will find out who sets the penalty.
Okay.
And who pockets the money.
Yeah.
Part of, part of why there is a penalty, which I think, at the very least, the precedent set by the state, municipalities, charge this penalty, whether or not we have the ability to say we don't want to charge the penalty, we can find out. But a lot of this has to do with the fact that every once in a while, the way your, the market for your CLA and the, the, the tax rate set in Montpelier for non-residential properties versus the one that's more affected by your actual school budgets for the homestead, sometimes the non-residential rate is lower than the homestead rate. And in order to keep homeowners from just saying, oh, I'm not a homesteader, just to chase that lower non-residential rate, the state is, was out and saying, hey, if you own a home, you're a homesteader, and you better declare that homestead. And that's one of the reasons why there's a penalty.
Well, the other penalty is?
The later you are. But we will find out, we'll find out who sets this penalty and where the money goes.
They rely on the HS 122 hammer to be that you can't file the HI 144, which is the pre-bate. All right? So if you don't file HS 122, there's no pre-bate. You aren't getting it. You've got to file HS 122 in order to get the pre-bate. So they, in Montpelier, they thought, well, everyone who's got, got a homestead is got, is going to file the HS 122 because they want to get that pre-bate. But not everyone gets an HI 144 pre-bate.
The top, the top income level in terms of inflation and the fact that they've lowered it, there are now less households than ever that actually enjoy the pre-bate. So many people aren't even going to bother. So we'll, we'll find out.
But bottom line, 600 is ridiculous.
It was. It was. I could see a hundred bucks. And he even talked to them. I said, look, Denny, you're supposed to do this, and you didn't do it. And it's like, when you don't file your taxes on April 15, you know there's a penalty you got to pay.
Did he understand it wasn't our penalty, though? It was the state's?
We, we are, yeah, we were unclear.
This is what happens when you have a statewide property tax system that is administered globally.
I think he did understand that, Trudy, though, at the end of our meeting. He seemed appreciative.
We thought we could abate it, but there's very strict abatement rules, as you know. You just can't abate everything. It's a very strict set of rules in order to show abatement. And I wasn't sure that was going to be able to be one of them, because the, because the office here did say, come on in and, and go through the abatement process, which he did successfully, I think. And I, because I think that's a reasonable, that was a, you know, reasonable negotiation.
We'll also find out, so another lingering inherent problem with all this is I believe the municipalities are supposed to send some of the reminders with none of the data necessary to track. We don't even know whose, you know, we get these monthly, or I guess sometimes weekly, vague updates on, on who's filed for homesteads over the course of the tax season. So, well, I'll get some information on that, too. Like, if you do not submit your 122 on TurboTax because you forgot, how are we supposed to find that really? So we'll find, so then we can know how the system's set up, and the city council can decide what they want to do.
I could own my house on, on April 1, which is the cutoff date.
Yeah.
And be ready to move, to move to South Burlington and not file an HS 122, knowing that I don't consider April 1, I don't consider that that as my residence as of April 1, but the city still says, geez, I still own it. So the city may say, oh, well, jeez, Tim forgot to file his HS 122. No, it's because it's no longer. And if I decided I was going to move somewhere else, Florida, right, and say I'm going to use this as my secondary, you know? You, you, you can't real, I, it's going to be tough to have the city look up all those and send a notice to each one. Are you really sure? You don't want to do this? I mean, that's, that's burdensome. I hope there's a better way.
Okay. I don't want to make a big deal of this, but thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for putting us behind schedule.
I'll move along before we get further in the agenda.
We're going to move on to item number four, the budget development process. You had a timesheet, I believe, in your packet.
This is pretty high-level overview, but just to have a sense of what the calendar and professional drafts would be. Tomorrow night, we're reviewing the police and dispatch budgets with the Joint Police Board. We will be meeting with the police union throughout December. First week of January, we will meet with the city finance committee. The city staff try to come in, put in our best foot forward, and so typically, there aren't a lot of adjustments. Often, we can make those before the city council meeting on the 12th. But if there are more, we can do so. Council will see it on the 12th. And typically, that moves pretty swiftly as well. The council's able to give us some guidance, and we can finalize the budget either with a final meeting on the 19th or signing the warning on the 26th.
Any questions on that for city manager? No actions necessary. That's just after.
And the finance, Tim is on the finance. You and Chad.
Eric and Chad, yeah. And then you and Chad and me are tomorrow night with the JPB.
Yeah.
I mean, just because we're going over the budget tomorrow night with the JPB and the town doesn't mean that we're going to have, have something ready to rock and roll. We're just, this is going to be the presentation. I mean, I, I think that someone's going to, I think we're going to be okay, but I think the, the town may want to go back to their people and say, this is what's being presented. Where are we? Do you, do you agree?
Not entirely. I mean, I think the, the work of developing the police budget is, is really done by the JPB, you know? And obviously, you're representing constituencies there, you know, but, you know, I, I think honestly, the, the union negotiations are going to be the biggest driver in it. I, you know, we'll see how tomorrow night goes, but my, my sense is the city and the town delegates aren't going to be far off from each other.
So you think after tomorrow night, we're going to have a good?
I think we'll have a weather report.
Off air?
Yeah.
Are you good with that? No other questions on the timeline? All right, we'll move on to item number five, where we have six people up for renewal on the Parks and Recreation Board. The six include Duran McGinn, Paul Snyder, Mike Zemianek,
Zemianek.
Morrell Bunbury, Sean McElwain, and Jen Disor. So those are the six. They've all been serving, and the recommendation is from the Director of Rec, Kelly Viens, that to, for us to reappoint all of them. Three would be nominated through December 31st of 2027, and three being Morrell, Sean, and Jen being on till December 31st of '28.
Do you want two separate motions for the, for the timeframe or just?
I think we'd do one with the slate as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of Parks and Rec board members.
As, as recited in the December 8, 2025 memorandum.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on this? Any comments? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion passes. We now move on to item number six, which is consider appointments of planning and development boards. Chip, do you want to jump in or should we just move forward?
First up, we have Erin Garso for the vacant seat on the Historic Preservation Commission. And the recommendation is to give him the, the term that's still assigned to that vacant seat, which is May 31st, 2027.
And before we go, I'm just going to make a blanket comment that everyone on the list has already been interviewed by council people in some form or fashion. So the first one is, as Chip stated, Erin Garso for Historic Preservation Commission, filling the seat till May 31st, 2027. So a motion?
I'll motion that Erin Garso get that seat.
Motion by Eric is your second?
Second.
Second by Trudy. Any comments?
Um, he was really fun to talk to. Like, we interviewed him and he is.
Music teacher but passion for architecture.
Yeah, a lot of excitement, and I think he'll bring a lot to the table, so.
His application was interesting, with not afraid to do some research and deep research and whatnot.
He already has a mini-inventory of historic buildings in the city.
He has the, the Facebook page, Historic St. Albans, Vermont.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was great.
Something to watch.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Erin is appointed to the, to that committee, Historic Preservation. We're moving on to B, which is Brittany Patterson nominated or submitted her name for the Climate and Energy Advisory Committee.
Two vacant seats, and in order to preserve the balance and terms on the committee, we're advising that she be assigned to the one that expires on August 14th, 2027.
So that we will continue to have one vacant seat?
Yeah.
All right, for those who may have interviewed her, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Brittany Patterson to the Climate and Energy Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion from Trudy, second by Eric. Any comments or questions?
One thing that was really interesting in her interview was that she, she was a reporter, a climate and environmental reporter from out of, out of state, and then she came here for a couple of events to like interview people, and she plumped herself down, I think, at Travel Cup or Red House Suites.
Yeah.
And because she visited here a couple of times in the capacity of her job, she and her husband like ended up moving here because they thought St. Albans was so awesome. So I was like, that's just like nice to hear, because we put a lot of work into our city and to hear her say that she moved here and now she wants to be on our committee. And she works at UVM in that field, so it's going to be great.
Her resources and everything.
Yeah.
So is that motion for the 27?
Yes.
Yes, it was. So we have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes to appoint Brittany to the Climate Committee. Moving on, we now have Development Review Board. Chip?
Tanner McEwen is leaving his full seat, not seeking reappointment, so we have Becky Manahan, one of the alternates, who's interested in being promoted to a full seat. So the suggestion is that she be appointed to that, to Tanner's seat effective on January, and that she be given, on January 1st, and that she be given a term expiring December 31st, or that she keeps her seat, which expires on the December 31st, 2027, that she keeps her term.
So what will be the next, you still have a vacancy in terms of the alternate, right?
Yeah, we would have a vacant alternate.
And would that go out to the 28?
Depending on when we fill it.
And she didn't even interview because she's already on the, on the board. So you just need a motion to?
Promote her.
Promote her.
Yeah.
I love the word promote. To advance your position.
Pay would stay the same.
Yes, pay would stay the same. I'll make a motion to promote Becky Manahan to a regular seat on the Developmental Review Board with a term expiring 12/31/27.
My second.
Motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes to appoint Becky to the open seat applied Tanner McEwen. Moving on to the Belonging and Equity Committee. There's three reappointments there. Mariah Jameson Brooks, Carl Watkins, and Melissa Bailey.
Yeah, just suggesting that they be reappointed and given terms expiring 2028.
All three, right?
Yes.
I move that we appoint all three with terms expiring in 2028.
In a second. Motion from Jack, seconded by Eric. Any questions or comments? No interviews were necessary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Chip, didn't we, we interviewed a third person the other night?
Yes, there's a candidate for the Planning Commission and two candidates for the Downtown Board. And there's another Planning Commission candidate and another Downtown Board candidate that are scheduled for their chats on the 17th.
That's right.
And so then we'll bring the PC and Downtown for the council in January.
Okay, cool.
So last I knew, we were interviewing one and moved to two.
Yeah.
Now we're up to what?
No, it's still those two.
Just those two?
Yeah.
All right, Chip, final hearing for the VCDP Grant for Home Repair Loan Program.
Yes, this is a required hearing. So you may recall, we just approved an application for Champlain Housing Trust Home Repair Loan Program to the VCDP HUD CD, uh, block grant, grant program. And that's going, that's going forward. VCDP will consider that. But in the meantime, the old round for the, for that work is, is winding down. They're closing out that old grant, and this is a required public hearing. So we have Travis Phillips from CHT, who's on Zoom, who can give a brief overview of what they've accomplished with the old round and take any questions that they might, that folks might have.
Travis will turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks, Chip. So thanks for seeing me again today, everyone. It wasn't that long ago. I was sitting, sitting in that room with you, so good to see you again. We've had a successful three years running this program. And before I kind of get into a couple of statistics, I just wanted to say how appreciative we are of the partnership we've had these last couple of years with the city and this council. And to also thank Chip and Dominic for the support they provided us. Without all of you, we wouldn't have been as effective as we have been with assisting all of these people in our community. So thanks again. We, we really appreciate your partnership in this program, and we look forward to working with you again for the next few years. So this was a three-year grant cycle that we're finishing up. The final date of this cycle will be December 31st, 2025. Over this grant cycle, we've utilized over $1.6 million in VCDP funding to support the program. And we've also leveraged over $950,000 of other resources to keep things afloat and, and keep money going towards the homeowners that so desperately need this help. St. Albans has been our municipal sponsor for this program since 2017, and during that time, we've completed 22 projects in St. Albans, and we have two more currently in our pipeline that, that should be finishing up fairly soon. Since 2023, we've completed 64 repairs on owner-occupied homes. We anticipate that number to be up to about 76 by the end of this year. We've got, it's going to come down to the wire a little bit, but we've got everything scheduled, and we're, we're looking to hit our goal for the three-year period, which is great. Direct repair costs were about $660,000. Direct repair costs were about six hundred and sixty thousand, leveraged another two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and partnered with programs like the Vermont Center for Independent Living, the Weatherization Program, and the Manufactured Housing Improvement Program to, to meet those financial needs. Sixty percent of our homeowners were elderly, thirty-three percent were disabled. Forty of our households had an average median income of below fifty percent of AMI. The average household income of our clients was thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, as you can see, we're, we're assisting folks that really need the financial assistance. We currently have about twenty-seven households in our pipeline going into the next year. We expect that to increase significantly with our new grant as we kind of kick off new marketing efforts and make some, some tweaks to the program that we think are gonna generate a little more interest. For the education and counseling side of this grant, we served over six hundred and twenty-five households over the last three years with our homebuyer education and financial literacy programs. Of those six hundred and twenty-five households, one hundred and eighty-six households are able to go on and purchase a home through our Shared Equity Program or our Manufactured Housing Down Payment Program. So that's summary of where we are. And like I said, we're really looking forward to doing this all over with you again for the next three years. And we'll be seeing, seeing Chip again on Wednesday to sit in front of the VCDP Board to make our pitch for our application.
Travis, are you pretty knowledgeable about all the applications and what they consist of?
From like the other homeownership centers or the applications for borrowers for our program?
For Franklin County?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with them. You know, my team is more on like boots on the ground, working with them one-on-one, but I meet with them every week to kind of discuss where every project is and, you know, how I can be of assistance to keep projects moving forward.
My only, my question is, is there one that really stands out for you as to the benefit of the program? If you don't have one, no problem.
You know, I don't know that I have one specifically in Franklin County off the top of my head. There, just to kind of give you a story for the kind of folks that were assisting, we see the, we see these in, in all the, the areas that we run the program. We had someone who, their only income was disability. They came bus because they needed their kitchen remodeled, like their countertops were falling apart. They didn't have a safe place to, you know, prepare meals. And we came in to really kind of replace all that and found out that their subfloor underneath their sink had totally rotted away. And very quickly, we all circled up to work with them and the existing contractor to find them more money and grant them that money quickly to keep that contractor on site, get all of the work done. And we were able to get everything done in time for the holidays. So they were able to celebrate Thanksgiving in their home with their family because we were able to get this worked on quickly. And they had no other means to go out and do that. And, you know, I think that's a great example of the kind of folks that were really looking to assist with this program and a story of how we were able to utilize our resources and our team to meet them where they were and give them what they needed in as quick a time as we could, and also in a difficult, a difficult time, you know, with the cold weather coming and the holidays coming around. Everyone, everyone was, everyone was very stressed out and they're, they're very thankful for us to, to be there for them.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So Chip, anything else you need from us?
No, just take any public comment there is and then close the hearing.
I have a couple questions, Chip. There are twenty-two properties in St. Albans. How many of those are in the city, do you know?
I don't have that off the top of my head. If you give me a second, I can look it up.
So we, since two thousand seventeen, the city has just been the, the sponsor? And what does that entail for you, Chip, and staff here? Like, what's the time commitment?
Oh, it's, it's probably about an hour a month.
Oh, so it's minimal?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just wondering, since two thousand seventeen, it's been here? Like, do other communities say, hey, we'll, we'll take, we'll take a turn?
No, typically only if they're asked by Champlain Housing Trust.
Okay. But it's only an hour a month. Okay. And you're compensated for that, I suspect?
When we need to be. Sometimes the compensation's not worth the paperwork to, because we spend so little time on it.
Okay, okay.
We might spend more time on the paperwork than we, than the compensation we get.
We get more happening here because we sponsor it. It's definitely a net positive.
Okay, because I noticed one of the, one of the stories in here was around Fletcher. I was like, that's-
Yeah.
That's, okay, but it's a benefit.
Hundred percent.
I'd just be curious to know how many city households are impacted since-
You know, every, every year we have this conversation about realizing the potential to do more, right? And, you know, trying to connect it more with our code enforcement program and, you know, it's, so I think there's more that we could do, but honestly, it's probably more on the staff level. The greatest opportunities for us are on the staff level and connecting more people with CHT than anything else.
And they're low-interest loans and grants, or are they, they low-interest loans or are they sometimes grants, like here, we're just gonna do this for you?
Yes. We, we have offered grants and low-interest loans. Most of the loans are deferred loans, so they require no payment and accrue very little interest. Interest rates range from one to three percent, so they're well below market. And it scales based on a household's income and what they can afford to pay, or, or at least accrue, yeah. And starting in twenty, next year, we're gonna actually increase our grants a little bit to offer a little bit more, given the rising, rising costs of things.
It's nice when you go knocking on a door that you have a resource to share.
And, you know, I wanted to add, you know, last time I was there, we talked about potentially tabling at Town Meeting Day in St. Albans. And we are definitely planning on doing that and we look forward to doing that. We're happy to, happy to try to grow the program as much as we can in St. Albans.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thanks. It's great.
Any other questions for Travis or Chip? Hearing none, seeing none. We will move on, right, Chip? Nothing else?
Yeah, just close the hearing if there are no further comments.
Travis, thanks for joining us. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Take care, everyone. I'll hopefully see you again soon.
Thank you. Alright, anything else, Chip, you want to share? You're good?
We are all good.
We'll move on to Mayor's Report. For me, nothing but strong compliments on the park, how it looks. I give kudos to First Response, local business who did the lights. A lot of work. I'll share a quick story. I thought I was doing the right thing by buying an eighteen-pack of La Bata Blue and bringing enough to the boys to thank them for their work. And only one out of, out of the six drank. So the one individual made out with the, made out with the eighteen-pack. I told them I should have brought Coke and that was my bad, but they were very, very appreciative of the gesture, but they, not nearly what we are for the amount of time, the weather that they dealt with, the way the park looks. I just think they've done an outstanding job, so. And then on top of that, Arly and her team pulling off the Hallmark in the Park and the tree lighting. Just a lot of great activities for the Festival of Trees. So thank you to all of them for what they did. I think that's it for me right now. We'll start, actually, we'll go to you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I also attended the Hallmark in the Park and that was great. I got there a little bit late, went and got some pizza from Tim's Place first. And it started at what, at four-thirty? I think I got there at like five-thirty or six. And there were still a ton of people, even though it was really cold. The bonfire was awesome. The trees, just beautiful, yeah, looks great. I also attended the gala over the weekend and, or whenever that was. That was really great. Awesome fundraiser. It looks like a lot of people brought in some canned goods for extra chips. And then yesterday, I went flyering for Operation Happiness in my ward. So if anyone's interested in that, there's a website. And that was just to say, if you're interested in participating, leave your stuff out, your donations out on the front porch or near your front door next Sunday, Saturday.
As for clarification on that?
Yeah.
Operation Happiness historically has been like the thirteenth of December, where they actually give out the, the food and toys and whatnot. Do you know what the actual date of Operation Happiness is?
I don't know the date-
Trudy, do you?
When it's disseminating. I know that-
It's different than they used to do it now.
They're picking up in St. Albans City on the thirteenth.
They're picking up the food.
They're picking up the donations.
That's, historically, it's better than the day they've done.
Yeah, I think it's later this year. So they're picking up donations on the thirteenth between noon and four, at least in the city where I was. But I know that every community does a little bit different. The sign-up dates are different for every town. So I know that a lot of, every organization that helps those in need is seeing very high numbers this year. Very, you know, any stocking event, any food shelf is reporting really high numbers. So if anyone has any ability to give, that's awesome.
Anything else? That's it. Thank you. Chad?
Uh, yeah, just one quick question. Have we started to get the park mobile in the four spots by courthouse yet? Is there like a hiccup or?
I don't think there's a hiccup. I think it just takes a little bit to get the signage.
To get it going. Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it?
I told Sarah she didn't have to come tonight, but now.
Eric, I gotta echo the park was great. We went down ourselves and had a great time. I also want to thank, I know he's not on, but I want to thank Marty in Public Works. They got the signs up around Barlow Street School. We've seen actually less cars parked up there in the evening, which is good. Not sure if it's a sign relator, just coincidental, but I know people are discussing it, so thank you. I do have one item I wanted to bring past Council on, when you're coming down Upper Walden Street, there's a number of people that bypass the four-way at Upper Walden and Barlow by turning left on Brunel, going very fast down Brunel and then down Diamond. So I've actually spoken with Marty, I spoke with Maurice, or emailed back and forth, sorry, Chief Lamoss, and I've spoken with Dom. And there was some favor towards like possible options. And one of them that came up was a three-way stop at the end of Barlow. So that would force them to come to a stop on Diamond versus flying through Diamond. And Maurice thought that was a good one and so did-
Three-way stop on Brunel.
It would be, no, no, Barlow, Barlow and Upper, and Diamond. So you come around the corner and you're coming down, it would be a three-way right there at the end of Barlow instead of one way, or one stop, I guess.
But that doesn't address the speeding cars on Brunel taking the right onto Diamond.
No, but they were saying that if there's a stop there, the people going down Diamond are more likely to just continue down to Barlow, not to Walden because they have to stop anyways. So there's no real difference to the, to the stop.
I always thought there was a stop sign on Barlow and Diamond.
There is a single stop sign. There's not a three-way.
So they want, what Eric's saying is, if you're going up Diamond towards Brunel, you have to stop.
Before you turn that left?
But I don't think- Yeah, before you go up and around.
It's not a four-way stop.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I think it's-
It's a little confusing.
Well, there's not four ways, there's not four roads in there, but geez, we have a lot of stop signs already.
We do. And if it was just a couple neighbors, then I'd just investigate and try to figure it out, but there's more than a couple neighbors that are complaining in that road. And the reason I didn't propose it up on Barlow or Brunel and Diamond was because there's a short, it's like eight neighbors that live after that on Dead End. And I just hate to put a stop sign in for them, but-
Well, they live there, so they know, they know what they need, right?
I have no problem moving forward with an ordinance on that.
Safety.
You want to take it to the committee?
I'll take it to the committee.
Take it to the committee. I-
Sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking at a map right now. I'm trying to orient myself.
Yeah, it's basically the end of Barlow. You, you run into Diamond.
You know where Barlow Street School is, right? Yeah, just keep going all the way down as far as you can go.
Yeah.
Not south.
So you want a stop sign on Barlow and Diamond?
It's gonna be a T, right? It's gonna be a T.
Yeah.
So like, yeah.
I mean, I'm fine with reviewing with the committee and touching base with the neighbor, end of one of the neighbors at least on that intersection to check with them.
Put a speed bump there.
But since cars are already stopping anyways in Barlow, it's like they hear the noise and they know it's already, so it's not like, that's a new-
You want staff to write it out, then you can take some time to think about it and then allow?
A stop sign doesn't necessarily mean they'll stop because the one in front of my house, very few people stop.
No, that's very true.
Yeah, but it could help.
Okay, anything else, Eric?
Uh, that's all I have.
Trudy?
Most everyone has said what I was gonna say about the Festival of Trees. I will tell you, someone from the Maple Run School Board messaged me about a budget meeting they have coming up and was hoping that I would attend. And I'm passing it along to anyone else who would like to attend. It's on this Thursday, December eleventh, six P M. at the Greg Brown Lodge. And they're really looking for community input around the budget. And as we know, the school budget has a great impact on our budget, so, and our tax rate for our residents. So I'm gonna go. Be welcome, anyone, to join me.
So it is projected, projected a twelve percent increase, right?
The December letter, it's twelve percent.
From the state.
And that's just on the education portion, not on the city portion?
Yeah.
So it couldn't be more.
And I believe, don't quote me on this, but I believe that the board member told me that right now, just as is, I think it's like, they're looking at seven percent just to keep everything status quo. Is that, does that ring a bell to you, Josh?
Not the education person.
Okay. I, that's the number that is in my brain, so that's-
Significant.
That's significant. So let's go to the meeting and check things out.
Well, I find it hard to believe that twelve percent is going to pass the month that year.
But at the same time, I, I hate to see the rainy day fund, if you will, being drawn down to-
To nothing.
To, to nothing to offset the school budgets.
Yeah.
Trudy, anything else?
No, the only other thing is the stockings for Operation Happiness on the tree at the library. There were many when I picked up mine and Becky put out something on social media and literally all the stockings were gone. So this community really steps up and, and helps out. And now they're working to try to help Swanton, who has a lot of stockings still on their trees, so. I just think it's, it's nice that our community is so supportive of people who are struggling.
Okay, thanks. Chip?
Two quicks and a question. I'll do the two quick ones first. Is there a ordinance in the city, and I don't, I don't know one, that requires you have to have a permit to store snow on, on the premises?
No.
Okay. The shopping center and the snow storage on the corner is, number one, unsightly. It's dangerous and it makes that entire shopping center a, a very tough place to get in and out when they've got it all stacked up there in that one corner.
Well, that, that's a different thing. That's, I mean, that's a site plan condition that they have to remove that.
Okay.
So there's not like a broad-based permit that everyone has to get, but specific properties. And so we'll, we'll look into that.
Just to see, I mean, if it's there twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, fine. But for two weeks or a week, that's a long time. Two is, I'd like to make it, and I thought we had done this before, but I'd like to make it so that every downtown business that, property that doesn't have a business there, they have to put a window facade up. but I'd like to make it so that every downtown business that property that doesn't have a business there, they have to put a window facade up. It must be. There must be a window facade. You can't be looking in, and that includes the Jiru Building, all the buildings. If you've got a building that is at least downstairs. And it's ironic that what got this on my mind was when I was coming down Fairfield Street, and I looked up over the top of the fake facades that are on the upper buildings on those first two after Real City Market. You could see the you can see the stairs, the fire escape stairs coming down through the windows. I thought that looked kind of unsightly. And then I noticed a couple of the other buildings that don't have any tenants in them that look like crap. I think they should have a facade. And if they need any any guide, have them go out to the Burlington Airport and take a look at some of their facades that are on their windows out there. Those would be perfect. All right, and I and I might think that the Century Twenty-One office has one in theirs already. And that's not a that's not a building that's vacant, but they have a window facade there that that is, I think is a feeling.
Display maybe more than a facade is what you mean.
No, I mean a sticker on the window. I mean, something on the window that, you know, depicts people or something or depicts something other than a ratty inside.
Some of them have like just empty boxes in the front of the windows. It looks terrible.
I have no problem. I'm just trying to crystal that.
Yeah, or just make it look nice.
Yeah, don't not a black, not a not a, you know, not painting it blue or something like that, or putting a piece of plywood on it or something like that. They had to have a direct facade on the window.
How would that interact with the land use that says we can't cover a certain amount of the window?
Let's, we're gonna take the suggestion and work through what we can do and how would that work?
Good. Just to take something, take a look at. And my question is, when's the truck parade?
Friday night.
This Friday night, tractor parade?
Friday, thirteenth, whatever the thirteenth is.
December thirteenth?
No, it's not the thirteenth.
Eric, I noticed your flyers didn't have the date.
It's the twelfth.
Your flyers that you have, you have the flyers out, the pamphlets out for the, aren't you the one that
Oh, yeah, 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 because it changes every year.
Yeah, just have it December on. I look, I don't worry.
Yeah, same old sky, yeah.
It's the twelfth. It starts at six o'clock.
Is that it?
Friday night.
Okay.
And the Jeep Parade, the Jeep Parade that that new car does around the city and town is on Saturday, the thirteenth.
You gonna be in?
This is my first year. I'm not. We get too much going on. But it is fun.
Okay, till Friday night.
Yep. Thanks.
Get your tractor on, Gus.
Uh, I want to go back to a couple of things. Kudos to Marty and his team for plowing in the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Um, they waste no time getting out there and getting them cleaned. I too had a complaint, if you can share it, lack of stopping on High Street on stop signs pretty much many times straight through, whether it's ruble-y.
California stops. I I don't say not not, but you know, the kind where you just roll it, roll it right through, yeah, yeah.
So there's someone wanted me to point that out, so if you could mention that to Chief.
Sure.
And then I think that was all I had. Yeah, I think that was it. So let's move on to approval of minutes from eleven ten.
Motion to approve minutes, eleven ten, twenty-five.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Trudy to approve the minutes of eleven ten. Any corrections, changes, amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve warrants, eleven thirty, twenty-five.
Second.
Any questions or changes on the warrant? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So Tim is coming. He sent me an invite for the practice parade. It's in my calendar.